Coming to the Cinco de Mayo City Council meeting. It is 6 o'clock and we have just returned from a closed session. I'd like to ask Mr. Black, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, we'll move then to have a formal call, to order a roll call, actually. Please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Shalong.
Here.
Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Here.
And Mayor Hawley.
Here, thank you. So, I'd now like to ask all of you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an acknowledgement of something that's not on the agenda. Some bad news that some of you may not have heard already was that long-term city council member and mayor Mike Scavuzzo passed away on Friday. And Mike was not only, for many, many years, more than 20, a member of the city council, but he was on the harbor commission, planning commission. He was generally dedicated to public service. I understand that services are going to be on Saturday, Kelly?
Yeah, tonight, we're just going to do a brief honor in his name, but his service will be Saturday at Weir's at 11 o'clock. And then, I think this council will do something a little more formal after we've had some time to put together that information. I actually had the honor of serving with Mr. Scavuzzo on the city council and it was never a dull moment. He always brought something to the table and he always walked away wondering. He was very charismatic in his own way and I definitely respect all the time that he served our community.
Thank you. And in honor of Mr. Scavuzzo's service, we will be flying the flags of the city at half mast over the next week. So, I'd like you all to join me in a moment of silence, please, on behalf of Mike Scavuzzo. Okay, thank you very much. So, on a lighter note, we have an acknowledgement today acknowledging Mental Health Month of 2014 called Pathways to Wellness. And I have Anita Janis here, who is the College of the Redwoods dean, is that correct?
Director.
Director, thank you.
I was going to say princess.
Princess, well, we can, at this stage, I guess you can do that. And Ms. Janis has, is involved with the California Institute of Mental Health?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And would you please tell me a little bit about your organization and what it is you do?
Yes, and actually, the involvement with the California Institute of Mental Health, Mayor Hawley, is that they have given the college a grant and that grant has been used this past year and will conclude in June on the 30th of this year to promote a pathway for social work, education. And we are reaching out to the high school students and even a little bit younger group of people, hoping to interest them in careers in that field. And they can earn an associate degree at the college and then springboard that into a four-year bachelor's degree at HSU. And it can all be done at a distance once they finish their degree with us.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So, people really can stay in the community, which is where we need social workers desperately.
Okay, as an ex-social worker myself, my degree's in social work, so I know it's beneficial.
Oh, a teacher, I can tell.
Oh, no, yeah, really, yeah, we'll talk.
Great. And what I was hoping to do was also to mention that on the 21st of this month, to commemorate the particular identification of this as Mental Health Month, the college is going to be hosting a two-pronged event. First, we will have some folks from Sutter Coast Hospital who are at varying points along the medical employment scale and they'll talk about their careers briefly and how they came to make the choices they made and how some of them have stair-stepped up to even higher levels. And then, we're going to have a break and have some food for folks who will be coming, hopefully, in great numbers. And we will also have about a one-hour conversation with various social work providers, agencies, county mental health, and so on, to talk a little about some of the stigma with mental health issues and how they came to choose their careers as well. So, it's the 21st from 5:30 to 8:30 and you all would be welcome to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in honor of the efforts that you were making, we have an acknowledgement here and I'd like to go ahead and read that to you and then present it to you.
Thank you.
Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions and whereas there's a strong body of research that supporter, support user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government, agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Crescent City, do hereby acknowledge May 2013, 14, excuse me, 14, as Mental Health Month in the city of Crescent City. As the body of the city council, we also call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Crescent City to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. So, thank you for being here and I'd like to present this to you.
I'd just like to say, thank you, and I'm really excited to hear that you can get a two-year degree in social work at the local college. It was something I was unaware of and so, that's a great opportunity for our kids coming out of school that may or may not know that as well, so thanks for letting us know about that.
Okay, moving on, we have a consent calendar before us. That involves approval of our regular meeting minutes from our last meeting, April 21st, receiving and file warrant claims for April 22 to May 5th, receiving and filing bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending April 19, 2014, paid on April 25, 2014, and number five, to consider and approve the reclassification of the fire department secretary position to fire department administrative assistant and take action as necessary and appropriate. So, the consent calendar is before us. First, I should ask, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, well, then, we'll bring this back to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of our consent calendar.
I have one minor correction in the minute.
Thank you.
On page five, it should be Joan Bueller as opposed to John Bueller.
Thank you. That's, that's an important change.
I'm sure she would agree.
Yeah.
I'll second the consent calendar.
Okay, the consent calendar's been moved and seconded, please pull the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley.
Yes. Okay, so, we're moving on to reports and presentation and we have Cassandra here tonight. Mr. Palazzo, would you like to introduce Cassandra?
I'd like to introduce Cassandra Heseltine with the Humboldt-Dell Nord Film Commission to give the council an update on the film commission activities and present a new project that you're working on.
Hi, Cassandra Heseltine, Film Commissioner for Humboldt-Dell Nord Counties. She's stealing my mouse. So, I have a few things to show you guys, some goodies of things that I've been working on. Or not. There we go. Can you make it to the slideshow? Oh, I see, I could've done it too. Oh, my glasses on, I gotta find the arrows, there we go. So, we've been busy this year. First of all, let me tell you what a film commissioner does, you probably already know, but I'll tell you really briefly, just in case any of you or these folks here don't know what we do. As the film commissioner, we're the liaison between the counties and the productions when they come to town. We help with locations and permits and vendors and crew and all the different resources that they need. And we help also market the area, out of the area, to film industry professionals to let them know and educate them what we have to offer up here. So, that's a big part of our job. There's two types of dollars that come in. There's the direct dollar and the indirect dollar when it comes to film commission, or film activity spending. Direct dollars are when they spend money on hotels, on restaurants, on rental car, things that have to do with actual shoot. Most shoots do not pay for meals afterwards for dinner. They get breakfast and lunch, so most people have to spend money afterwards. They might go out, they might have tourist-type activities that they do, they do other different things that become indirect dollars, as well as that money turns around in our community up to three times. So, for every dollar they spend directly on a shoot, it's approximated that it's $3 that they're really spending indirectly on the shoot. I can't find the arrow. There it is. So, this year so far, we've had three shoots that have filmed here. Casio G-Shock Watch, which was a pretty fun one, it was a print ad. We had Bing Search Engine have a slice of Redwoods in their search engine commercial that they did. And then, Tokyo Broadcasting came and filmed the Redwoods as well. It estimated roughly $4,800 so far in those three shoots that filmed here. And after you add the multiplier, it turns into roughly $14,000. So, we're excited by the dollars continuing to come in. Hopefully, the efforts that we do will continue to bring bigger projects so that we'll get the bigger dollars as they come in as well. So, one of the projects that we're doing is an indirect effect of film shoots that come here. Films have been in the Redwood region for 98 years. We're approaching our 100-year anniversary, which we're really excited about, and I'll tell you more about that in a minute. One of the projects that we had was, we used to have a map that just covered Humboldt County and it was called Map of the Stars, and it was movies that filmed in Humboldt County. And a couple of years ago, I realized that map was outdated, it was about 20 years old, and that it didn't cover Dell Nord, and at that time, we had started representing Dell Nord County. So, we decided to update it and make it a little bit more contemporary in the sense of that we now will have, it'll be on Google Maps, she can find it online, you'll be able to print it, download it, besides having a hard copy brochure. As well as, as you can see in the corner, there, this, there's a little marker, and I'll show you a bigger version of this. This is the outside of the brochure, so this will actually be the outside cover, which representing both Dell Nord and Humboldt County is the Battery Point Lighthouse, which is very lovely, is the cover of the brochure. And then, there'll be directions telling you how to get to the place where the film took place. Let's see, so, here's the inside of the map, is what it'll look like, and it'll show both counties with the different little clacker boards that show you where the filming took place and a little bit about each film. We picked the top 30 roughly films for both counties together, so there will be a few that'll be missing for both counties on there, but these were the most notable ones for, that people might want to go and tour, so it's a self-guided tour that they would take. And on this, we, we'll be distributing it at these different places and there'll probably be some other places as well that will be distributing the maps, but this just gives you an idea of where people will be able to find these maps to do the self-guided tour. And this is a sample of another part of, to the map is these markers, and they'll be near or at the location where filming took place. This is actually, I had it upside down, this is ET, this is the one that will be going here in Dell Nord County at the Westbrook Ranch, where part of ET is filmed. And so, this is the size of them, they're pretty small, but they're also something that people would be able to find and hopefully take a picture, put it on Facebook, "Oh, where are you?" "Oh, I'm in Dell Nord County." Social media, for all of you. So, we're pretty excited to have something like this, oh, yeah, more. Johnny Depp and less Mohicans, less of the Mohicans. And these will be pretty exciting because it'll have people either stay an extra day, maybe they'll find out about it, or people, in the case of Star Wars, I guarantee you, will come specifically just for that. So, it's great, it's another way that we benefit economically off of filming being in the area. We won't necessarily, us as the film commission, be tracking the dollars that this brings in, but we are excited to know that we're contributing to the economic benefit and economic stimulus of the area for that. So, that is the big project that we're actually going to be unveiling, May 22nd in Humboldt County and May 29th in Dell Nord County, and we'll be having a little cake and sparkling cider party and that'll be coming up and you guys will be receiving information regarding that. This is the foundation, we wanted to create this, and then, two years from now, when we have our 100-year anniversary, the hope is that we would have a big film day, or a day dedicated to film in the region, and we would be giving an award to George Lucas. He's the one filmmaker that filmed in both counties, and so, we'd be inviting George Lucas up to the area, whether it's him or a representative, who knows, but it would be great that we would give him some type of acknowledgement for filming up in the area. We'd be bringing up stormtroopers from San Francisco and we'd have a big party. So, we're really excited because this is the foundation that we finally were able to lay down before we can get ready for the big 100-year anniversary of filming up here. The little arrow, there we are. Another thing that we're going to be doing this, this sort of fiscal year, we've started it this year and we'll be actually launching this in September, the first weekend in September, is we're going to be doing a fam tour. So, we're going to be bringing up nine industry professionals, probably about four studio executives and five location managers to come up who've maybe never been in the area, and we're going to show them for three days, both Humboldt and Dell Nord Counties, and we're going to take them, wine and dine them, show them all the spectacular views, show them the hotels and the great restaurants and the different types of resources that we have for them for that, as well as film-friendly, other film-friendly services and crew. And then, they'll be able to see firsthand what we have to offer as an area for filming. And that's really a great way, and it's an industry practice, to be able to really educate them, because they can hear about it all they want, they can see me at a trade show, which is a great benefit as well, but to get them here for three days and saturate them with what we have to offer is really, there's no other way of marketing than that. It's the best way.
What does fam stand for?
Familiarity.
Familiarity tour.
Yeah, familiarity tour.
Cassandra, have you done this before?
We have not, the film commission has not done it here, but it is industry practice amongst film commissioners. But because it's a really expensive thing for us to do, because we have to fly them up, we have to put them up, and for instance, San Bernardino, when they do it, it's an hour and a half drive for LA professionals to go to, but when we bring the LA professionals, it's flight for nine people, it's hotel accommodations, so there's a little bit more to it when we do something like this. So, this is the first time that we've actually had marketing money, part in which due to the funds that we've received from the Visitors Bureau here, and we're really excited between the partnership here, as well as our other funders, we're able to, and Headwaters has helped fund the airplane that it would take to bring those people up here so that we can have one flight to bring nine individuals. This is the first time that we've had the funds to be able to do this.
Are you finding that local businesses are supporting, like, offering hotel stays, things like that?
Yes, we have 50% off on our hotel stays, we have different businesses and organizations that are donating money or donating product. HSU is helping with one of the, sponsoring one of the dinners, so we were able to quick, really quickly put a package together, see if it was going to work and be viable, and we're going to continue to do that all the way up till September to just make it a stellar tour.
That's awesome. When is, when is the tour?
It's going to be, I believe it's 4th, 5th, and 6th, that first September, that first weekend in September.
Okay.
I think that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I believe those are the dates. Yeah, so, we're pretty excited. Some other things that we did, or we have done this year is, as you may know, we rebranded the film commission. We used to be known as, prior to me coming onboard, Redwood Region Entertainment Education Liaisons, Inc. Try saying that real fast, two dimes or three dimes. And then, we had two branches, we had Film Humboldt, we had Film Dell Nord, and it was just a big mess. And the news never knew what to call us, when I was out of the area trying to market us, it became a big mess. And so, that was our nonprofit name with our two branches. And finally, I said, "Look, can we just be normal like all the other film commission offices and just say our counties we represent and call us the film commission?" So, we redid that, which is lovely. We've merged both Humboldt and Dell Nord together, so anytime I work on a Humboldt project, Dell Nord's name is attached and vice versa. So, it's lovely because there's double marketing there both times, so we're really just one big office. That should say marketing in Humboldt County, I mean Dell Nord County as well, sorry about that. The newsletter makeover is something that we've done, which has been amazing. It was a newsletter that we put out about a year ago and, or two years ago, and we remade it this year and this month in particular, it was really exciting. It's a newsletter that goes out to like 450 different professionals. This month in particular, we were able to actually have a gentleman not only say, normally we get people who say, "Oh, I like it, thank you for these great newsletters," but this gentleman reached out to us about a project based on receiving our newsletter, which is one of the hardest things to do, is to get them to respond to something you've sent out market-wise. It's different to see something that if they have a need and we apply for it, but that was one of the hardest things. So, we're starting to, all our marketing is finally starting to come together where people are reaching out to us for projects based on our marketing. We've done a whole bunch of worldwide press, which Dell Nord has been attached to because of After Earth. When we talk about After Earth filming in Humboldt County, the Will Smith movie, we talk about the Redwoods that we have both in Humboldt and Dell Nord County. There was a big article in the LA Times last year and Dell Nord was mentioned in that. And when we released a PR for After Earth, the DVD coming out, that was mentioned over on 300 websites, also was an article in Sacramento, so it was exciting. Because of our marketing money going up, I've been able to visit more studios and meet more film professionals when I go down to LA. It's not just a quick go-to-whatever-big-meeting-I-need-to-go-to-and-come-home, I normally stay an extra day and spend more time down there. We've been able to increase our photos on our website and we are also featured in, there's a new magazine called Location California, which is this great magazine that features locations in California, and thus, the title. And one of the pictures is Dell Nord County, and so, as you can see, it's really lovely. So, we're excited. So, not everybody got featured in this, not all the film commissions in the state of California, we're pretty excited. This one talks about Return of the Jedi being up here. This is Stout Grove and courtesy of David Bisselt, I'm going to murder his name, Bisselt. And so, we're really excited to have that featured in here. And I'll be giving this to the chamber to have, the Visitors Bureau Chamber to have for their files. And we also are going to be doing a video, we're pretty excited about that. We'll have a video that we can put on Facebook and out there online and give out to local professionals, we'll have a 30-second one as well as a three-minute one, and it'll feature all the stellar locations, believe it or not. We don't have our own video like that, so we finally have the marketing money for that and we're really excited to use that as a marketing tool. Okay, don't laugh at my posing. That's me and Perry King, you might have seen Scarecrow Mr. and Mrs. King, I think it is, was the TV show in the 80s. He also was in another one where he was a cop with a speedboat. I can't remember, it wasn't the Don Johnson one, there was another name, I'm forgetting what it is. Anyways, he was, he was a big actor in the 80s and he was in The Day After Tomorrow, played the President of the United States most, more recently, and he was emcee of one of the award shows that I attended back in October. It's been great, there's five different events here, I normally, which took place in four trips to LA, but five different events, I normally could have, in the past, attend two, so we've doubled the times that we go to LA, which is pretty exciting for us. The last slide in here, or second to last slide in here, is about our tax incentives. I don't know if you've heard anything about it, it's going to be on the news tonight, actually. There is a big bill that's being passed and it's increasing the ceiling of the amount of money that a project can be budgeted at. It increases the amount of tax incentives that they could give out, as well as it increases a 5% in addition, if you film in the state of California, outside of LA. And the reason we really need tax incentives is to be able to compete with the other countries and states that give tax incentives, and so, we're really hoping that this passes and goes through. It's really important, we've seen a major decline in filming since, the past couple of years, since New York and Georgia and Canada and all those places have been giving tax incentives. And in December, we lost a big independent feature film starring Ellen Page. The movie was written specifically for the Redwoods in Northern California and they were coming here to scout and they were very excited to film here, and then, they found out they could get better tax incentives in Canada, and so, they left. And so, we did not get that movie. So, this is imperative that we, that these tax incentive legislature goes, legislate, goes through, and if anybody is interested in helping write letters and promoting any of that, I would greatly appreciate it. Last, to let you know where we've been and what we've done in our industry recognition, I was nominated for Outstanding Film Commission internationally for the world, so that was pretty exciting. I didn't make it to the finalists, but I was acknowledged by Dow Griffith for After Earth, for the work I did on After Earth, and that was really exciting to have that. I'm also now been nominated and placed on the Board of Directors for Flix, which is Film Liaisons in California statewide. It's the only organization for film commissioners in California, and they asked me to be treasurer, so I just attended my first meeting and gave my first treasury report last week in LA, so that was really exciting. So, that's it, that's, do you have any questions?
Kelly?
I just wanted, first of all, great presentation.
Thank you.
It's really nice to get an update from you.
Thanks.
And I wanted everybody that is in the audience to understand that the reason that Cassandra can do these things is because our city and county provide funding to the Chamber of Commerce Visitors Bureau and we belong to Humboldt, Film Humboldt-Dell Nord because of those dollars. So, that's an important point. I was going to ask if we could get that map put on our city website?
Yes, we'll have it on our website and we'll give that link to everybody so that everyone can have it. We want it to link back to us, so if we ever make a change, that change is only on my website and everybody's link still works and has that updated version.
Sure. And then, also, I was just going to ask if AB 1839, do you have a letter that you could provide us with information, we could?
I have sample letters, yes, and information to do that, yeah.
Great, consider that.
Mm-hmm.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And to note, I did not mention that film commissions cannot charge, we are a free service, we are required to do it as a free service, and as you said, we are only able to do the job with, with the dollars that you guys do give us, so we greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Cassandra?
I'd like to thank Cassandra for coming back up here again, I know you travel here a lot.
Thank you.
And the great work that you're doing. Dell Nord is getting recognized, first film in a long time that's been up here, and I'm sure we're going to have others.
Thank you.
I know there's someone in the audience that wants to make a comment, did you have a question or?
Do you have any idea how much money was lost by that film not being made?
My guess would be, well, when we had Love in the Time of Monsters, Dell Nord County made $75,000. And that was before you add the $3, you know, for one, every $1 to $3. So, that was $75,000 direct dollars that was filmed here for that particular movie. And you've got Ellen Page coming, so you probably, you know, have, you know, there wasn't as major of a star in Love in the Time of Monsters. So, roughly, maybe $100,000, I would say would be a good guess, before you multiply it by three.
Thank you. You know, I know that Councilmember Murray has something to say, but since I did open it up, does anyone else have public comment? Would you please come to the podium then, please?
Can I just shout?
Just this one time.
... May 29th, 18, 30 years later, still asking whether they filmed Star Wars. You know it's popular.
Yep, very, very popular.
Thank you.
So, when you're here on May 29th, where will you be holding the event to celebrate what we?
So, we will be putting up, pseudo putting up, unveiling our Tim McGraw's Not a Moment Too Soon video, which took place at the Battery Point Lighthouse, and that'll be happening at 4:30 and then, at 5 o'clock, we'll be walking over to the Visitors Bureau Chamber to have cake and Martinelli's.
So, you'll be out at Battery Point on the 29th and then, at the Chamber of Commerce?
Correct, 4:30 at Battery Point, 5 o'clock at Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, thank you.
Roughly, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I did open it up to public comment, I know there was at least one other person that wanted to talk, Eileen, do you want to come up?
Just as a note of history...
Just as a note of history, I just wonder how much money we might have lost by logging those little trees where they filmed Star Wars. Imagine if we had a Star Wars park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other on this matter? Okay, so we'll move on. Thank you again for your presentation. So moving on, now is the time, actually, for the formal public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the record. That's why I was hesitant to have you come up. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment here is limited to three minutes. Now, before I open this up for public comment, there's one caveat I'd like to make for this kind of a, kind of a special meeting tonight. If your public comment has to do with the state of Jefferson, you can, you can choose to comment now, and you will not be allowed to comment later. So I would suggest if that's the public comment you're looking toward, it would be better to do it as part of the, of the, of the new business item. But certainly, if you have to go somewhere and you want to make that comment now, you're welcome to do so. So we're open for public comment. Yes, sir?
And I'd just like to remind everybody to speak directly in the microphone, because a lot of our citizens are watching at home, and if you don't speak into the microphone, they cannot hear you on their televisions.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Selfridge. I live at 1030 Sunset Circle in Crescent City. That's behind Undersea World and the Apple Peddler Restaurant. Excuse me. I have a problem, and I share that problem with Walt and Nora Mezal, who run the Sunset, well, they ran the Sunset House Antiques, and now it's a bed and, or not a bed and breakfast, but, help Walt. Vacation rental, thank you. Thanks, Mary. We, I've lived there for 40 years. My father and I built the place, and in the last two years, specifically in the last six months, the influx of bums on the beach directly behind Walt and Nora and my place is out of control. Friday night, I called the police for twentieth time. They arrested seven bums. There were 14 down there on the beach directly behind where Walt and Nora and I live. I've gone to the Harbor Commission, and I've gone to the city police, I've gone to the sheriff, as has Walt and Mary and Norma, and we seem to be in the jurisdictional twilight zone. And so I'm here tonight to say, this is a plague and a real serious problem, and these people are alcoholics, drunks. I've, I've lost, I could start a list, I've only got three minutes, and I'm not going to, but I've lost thousands of dollars' worth of equipment. They're breaking into my building, stealing tools, stealing everything. My little boy cannot go to the beach anymore, cannot go out and play. They're actually camping. I've run them out directly behind my building 20 times in the last two or three years, and it's epidemic. It's like, when the sun comes out, it's the bum French Riviera, and they're moving in. And I called the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, and they, they respond, and they haul them off, but I'm still unclear about whose jurisdiction that beach is. As I said, the Harbor District said, eh, you know, to the settling ponds, the city says, well, you know, and, and we're not, you know, I'm not sure. This is a problem that will be remedied as soon as the walkway goes in down there. I know, it'll get taken care of real quick, but in the interim time, I have people breaking in, I have people stealing stuff. Walt will tell you, he'll tell you what his problems are in just a minute. So if you could help me, please, to find out who this no-manland belongs to, I'm calling the police on an every-other-day basis, you know, and they're arresting people and hauling them off, and there were five, I checked before I came down, five guys, you know, drinking it down there with a fire going. And so, anyway, thank you. It's bum city.
I sympathize. I don't know if the council has any comments, but Mr. Palazzo, you'll be in touch? Sir, we also have another public comment, apparently? Yes, sir?
Walter Mezal, I'm Mike's neighbor there. We have the vacation rental, and this, this is a terrific problem for us. Just recently, we had, we had a guest booked for a week. They stayed one night, and they left. They were scared. The lady said she went out for a walk, was accosted by these homeless people. She didn't say, she didn't elaborate on it, but she said she ran home, she ran back, and they, they left the following day. And I've had, we've had comments like creepy, and we, we need help. We rely on repeat business, and we won't get it anymore. And the city policeman, good. Mike calls them, they respond, but if it reaches the point where we have to call them, they've already spooked our, our guests, and they're ready to leave. So we're hoping you could look into this and maybe give us a hand. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming up, and I'm sure that Mr. Palazzo's gonna work with you and see if we can get this rectified.
I'm Mary Mezal.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Mezal, their daughter-in-law, and I'll, I'll make this brief. I do want to say too, that the sheriff and the city responded last Friday when they hauled off the seven of them, and they are great. They, they are really trying to work with us. But I guess my problem is not only with what's happening there, but the day that I walked down there, this is terrible, but there was a guy so drunk, that it was on the really hot day when it was 90, and the beach was covered with people and kids and dogs having a great time, and he turns around and urinates in front of all of them, and then fell flat on his face, and then pulled himself up and staggered back up. On my way to walk down there before I saw that, as I came around the corner by Selfridge's place, there was a guy passed out on the, on what is going to be our beautiful trail from the harbor. So it's, it's not just us, but it's everybody. When the J.C.'s tournament was here, and they were staying at our house, they watched people get in a fight under the big tree that's over by the liquor store there, so bad that somebody, it was a man beating up a woman, they came and took her away in the ambulance, took a couple people away, you know, in the police car, and then the others staggered off. But this is what our tourists are seeing as they come into town, and I feel our harbor is our jewel, and to not be able to go down and enjoy the harbor because of that, it's, it's just really bad. You know, it's just, it's gotten to where it's just, it's not clean, it's not sanitary, and it's dangerous. And I'm afraid that with that many people partying down there, at one time, 15 people, somebody's gonna get in a fight and somebody's gonna get hurt. So that's my comment. And I think that was it. I guess I would say, I would ask you guys to maybe take a little field trip and take what's going to be the trail from the harbor, and just encounter it. You'll, you'll see what we mean, and you can go any day, any day. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm sorry you're going through that. So again, staff will, staff will follow up, and any other public comment? In general? Okay, anything? Okay. So we'll move away from the normal public comment period. We, under public hearings, we have none this evening. Continuing business, we have none. Under new business is probably the major piece of our agenda this evening. Under new business, we're going to hear presentations and take public comment regarding Keepit California and the Jefferson State Movement, and take action as necessary and appropriate. Often I'll have the city manager introduce these matters, but I'm choosing to do this myself, because I've been contacted by all parties, and I, and I thought it was important, at least at first, to let you know a little bit of the history of how we ended up here in our, in our public agenda session. Kevin Hendrick, representing Keepit California, first requested this city consider a resolution opposing Measure A be placed on tonight's agenda. Given that the measure is scheduled by a vote, for a vote of the people, and considering staff have had no time for a thorough evaluation of recommendation, I was initially not inclined to grant his request. Shortly thereafter, Councilmember Murray also requested that Keepit California's proposed resolution be placed on the agenda. Upon reviewing the city's procedures, it was clarified that any council member may place a matter on the agenda. As a result, the decision was made to place the matter on the agenda after all. Before the agenda was finalized, a request was received from Aaron Funk, representing the local Jefferson State Movement, to give a presentation to the city also on this agenda this evening. It was ultimately decided to hear presentations from both sides in an attempt to give the council and the community a fair and equitable evaluation of the matter. Copies of the requests and supporting documentation have been included in our agenda packets accordingly. The council may or may not decide to support one of the positions. Regardless of the council's actions, we should all be more informed by the end of this important discussion. As the mayor, it is within my authority to determine how we will proceed. And I'm gonna go through several steps that I, just so we're all clear, clear on how we're going to move forward this evening. First, proponents for approval of Measure A, the Jefferson State folks, will start us off by giving a presentation of no more than 10 minutes. Secondly, following that presentation, the council will have an opportunity to ask technical or clarifying questions. Third, then, the opponents of Measure A, the Keepit California folks, will then have not more than 10 minutes to make their presentation. Following that Keepit California presentation, the council will again have an opportunity to ask technical or clarifying questions. The matter will then be opened up for public comment. I have a question, though, for all of you there in the audience. How many of you intend to make public comment on this matter? Okay, very good. Given that, okay, I, I think we can, we can go ahead and use the normal public comment period of three minutes, then. I was anticipating if there are many more of you that were going to do it, we were gonna reduce the period for public comment, but there'll be three minutes per public comment. Robin, okay, very good. When you do public comment, just as I just described in the, in the past public comment period, please come to the podium, and when you're recognized by myself, and state your name and whether you're a city or county resident for the record, and remember, your comment should be directed to the city council only. We don't want banter going on out in the audience. Once the public comment period has been completed, the council will discuss the matter further and take whatever action it feels is necessary and appropriate. But finally, in closing, I want to say that I understand that this is an emotional issue, and that both sides are passionate and sincere regarding their positions. While the council appreciates and values instructive discussion of ideas and positions, understand that if appropriate and respectful decorum is not maintained, these proceedings will be halted, and the city council will simply proceed with the remainder of its agenda. Okay? And if you've watched some of the, the past history on this matter, you'd understand why I took great care in trying to maintain order here this evening. So, that said, I would ask the state of Jefferson folks, Mr. Funk? First, I should ask, come on up, Mr. Funk. Does the council have any questions or any problems with this process?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Funk, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, I would request that you reverse the order by virtue of the fact that the opposition requested this meeting and appearance here, and traditionally, they would speak first, and I would be answering that as the respondent, I would request that we reverse that order.
Well, I selected the order because it seemed that actually the, the opponents to Measure A are, are reacting to the Measure A itself, and it seemed only right to, to get clarification on Measure A before the others proceeded. So I'd ask, I'd ask you to proceed in this order, please.
Okay. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We weren't given that nicety by the Board of Education, unfortunately. My presentation tonight's gonna be in two parts. By the, I can't see that, because, thank you.
We'll give you a few more seconds.
So one, one minute's already gone.
Okay.
We're gonna do it in two parts. First, the state of Jefferson, the second part is going to be Measure A. Last month, I was shocked to learn how little, apparently, the members of Keepit California understand about the United States Constitution and the democratic republic that it created. In the very first line of their ballot statement, and I quote this, "In the United States of America, representation is proportionate to population. To the contrary, the Constitution created a bicameral legislature with each state sending two representatives to the US Senate, assuredly not proportionate to population. This is a very important distinction designed to keep the larger, more powerful states from trampling on the rights of the smaller states. Similarly, the state of California Constitution created a bicameral legislature with a state cap, a senate composed of one senator from each senate, or from each of the counties, again, not a proportionate to population division. This legislation designed served the residents of California for over 100 years until 1964, when the Warren Court decided in Reynolds versus Sims to reverse that, even though the US Constitution called for it, and they took away our state senator. The, they robbed us of our representation in the senate along with 11 other northern counties, which now just share one senator. The 10 counties to our east also share just one senator. In contrast, the Bay Area has 10 senators, and the LA area has 20 senators. Together, our 22 counties have only 5% senate representation in Sacramento. This is actually less influence than the original 13 colonies had in England before the Revolutionary War. We also suffer a lack of representation in the US senate. Both of our US senators live in and represent the Bay Area and demonstrate little concern for rural counties. As a 51st state, Jefferson would have one state senator per county and would send two of its own US senators to Washington DC. The state of Jefferson movement is an opportunity to regain our representation in government. It is nothing more, and it is nothing less. It is provided for Article 14, Section 3 of the US Constitution, and follows a number of historically successful separations by other states. Not only does the opposition continue to misstate what is in that instance, it spends most of its time trying to scare us with what's not. In their ballot argument against Measure A, Keepit California warns that Jefferson supporters, and I quote again from the ballot measure, imply that all regulations will go away, and that the state of Jefferson will be allowed to log, mine, and fish without rules or restrictions. Now, I've never heard that implied anywhere, and I'm blown away that anybody would charge that. To the contrary, those most active in the movement are living in rural environments, defending good stewardship of the land we live on and its critters. We understand it, we appreciate it, and we practice good stewardship. We don't want regulations to go away. We just want regulations that better reflect the realities of nature and man's place in her wonderland. We don't want to diminish the quality of our environment any more than does anyone else sitting in this room. We do want to take back control over our taxes, and our schools, business regulations, water rights, welfare, immigration, coastal management, human and natural resources, and runaway government spending. We now have no say in Sacramento about any of these matters. When you hear the opposition warning that Jefferson will raise taxes, reduce services, destroy public education, close down the prison, disenfranchise the elderly, outlaw unions, crumble our highways, hobble law enforcement and fire services, eliminate jobs, and plunge us all into poverty, ask them to demonstrate and prove these fear-mongering allegations with statistics, but they can't do it. Their dire warnings are meaningless, as would be any promises we might make, without a lot more answers to a bunch of important questions. Neither of us has those answers, and anyone who purports to answer the important questions of finances and fiscal consequences of creating Jefferson is either purposely misleading you, or is foolishly repeating ungrounded assumptions. Until the rest of the county is interested in exploring the possibilities of Jefferson, exploring the possibilities of Jefferson, opt into the process, we won't have the answers upon which to base intelligent decisions. Until we know how many counties, and how many people, and how many businesses will be included within its proposed boundaries, we have no good measure of the human property or dollar values brought to the table. Until we know how many square miles of farmland, grazing land, timberland, parkland, and recreational land will be included, we won't know the value of our natural resources. Until we know the sum appraisal of taxable private real property, we won't be able to forecast property tax revenue. forecast property tax revenues. Until we know the extent of our retained water rights, we won't know the potential extent of our riparian resources. In short, we won't know anything of value in determining whether to proceed with creating a new state until all the involved counties have an opportunity to figure it out, to come up with answers together to important questions, real answers to guide us through the process. If we find that Jefferson is a great idea, we can keep going and achieve representation. If not, we can opt out. Some bemoan the assertion that the fiscal study will cost thousands of dollars. Do the math. Let's jack that thousands of dollars up to millions of dollars, or a million dollars. With a projected assumption of seventeen counties, the population of Jefferson would top 1.3 million people. That amounts to a cost of just seventy-seven cents to each resident living in those counties. The opposition shrugs off the concept of Jefferson saying that it'll never happen. I don't quite understand that, because then why are they spending so much time and energy and money on trying to defeat it? Perhaps because in 1992, twenty-seven northern California counties voted to separate from California and took it to the U.S. or to the state legislature. It went before the Assembly, a democratically-controlled Assembly, and was ushered through with -- by Willie Brown, the Speaker of that Assembly. It got bottled up in a committee in the Senate by one man, a process by which that can't happen again. Assembly -- then, the next step was -- would have been acceptance by Congress, a formality never denied, by the way, the other five states created by this method. Whatever the outcome of the Jefferson State process, we'll have created a powerful multi-county force with which to deal with Sacramento and demand that our representation in the state senate be returned to us. If this fails, we'll have created a persuasive presence and a legal standing before the United States Supreme Court in a lawsuit to reverse Reynolds versus Sims and return a constitutional senate to California. Part two. Measure A does not create the state. Measure A does not take us away from California. What it does is vote on A, asks our Boards of Supervisors to proceed to the process of engagement. A yes vote on Measure A asks our Supervisors, a majority of whom already support this issue, to reserve a place at the table with other disenfranchised counties in an attempt to remedy our lack of representation. A yes vote on Measure A calls upon our representatives to dig into the facts and come up with the answers necessary to make intelligent and informed decisions about our future and our children's future. And just as clearly, there emerges no valid reason for a no vote on Measure A. A no vote on Measure A essentially puts our heads back in the sand, turns off the lights, and stops us and prohibits us from going forward. I'm asking you not to come up with a resolution in favor of Jefferson. It's something that would be down the line when we have the right information. But I'm asking you to go ahead and pass a resolution in favor of Measure A, which does nothing more than put us at the table down the line with seventeen to twenty other counties. Without that, we're out. And if they go ahead with Jefferson, we're out. There isn't a chance to come back. Thank you.
So, based upon the procedure that I outlined previously, now is the opportunity for city council members to ask any questions they might want to ask or get clarification. Kelly?
Aaron, I had a quick -- Mr. Funk?
This is the opportunity for the council to ask you questions.
Pardon my voice. Don't ever try to outshout your backhoe while you're running. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One of the last things that you said that -- you said you want us to support Measure A, and all that will do is allow you, the Delnérd County, a place at the table. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. So, what I wanted to clarify with that statement is that even if the five of us support one or the other, really is not -- that's not providing you a place at the table. It's really the will of the people that will provide the place at the table, and only if the Board of Supervisors takes that action, but not the city council. This would just be -- you're just asking for us to choose which side we believe, but really, we're just five people.
What I'm asking is five informed people who are leaders of our community, who are expected to study and understand this more than the typical citizen, are going to give it the consideration it requires and come up and lead from, not from behind, but from ahead, and say, "This is what we found, and we think it's important. If you feel it's not important, you won't even vote on it. If you feel it's important, if you feel that if we miss this boat, it's not coming back to us." If you understand that, then you're going to say, "Let's go ahead and find out what's down the line." And it's not us, me, it's all of us. We all need that information.
And I wanted to just report out that I did meet with Mr. Funk prior to this evening. He asked for a meeting, so that's important, that that's on the record. We had a very short meeting, so I wanted to follow up. I'm a busy girl. I wanted to follow up with a question that I was leading you with, and that is, what is the process? Should Measure A pass? What is the process for the Board of Supervisors? Is there a set process that they follow?
There are constitutional processes, there are legal precedents, and as I understand it, it's been pretty well studied. If, in fact, when it passes, then each Board of Supervisors in each one of the counties that finally come forth, and we already have five, we'll have nine by the end of next month, probably seventeen to twenty by the end of all this, they'll sit together together, and they'll have a representative, assumably one of the Supervisors. They will be, just like Coastal Commission is sent there. And along with county and city council administrators, to be able to bring this information forth, you know, Highway Department, everybody, so they can put it in one place and they can sort it out. And they see, come see, what income comes in from California, how much more comes in from California than we put out, which it does. But how much federal money comes through, they're not counting.
So are you saying that there's precedence that the state of California would then allocate resources with their state employees to work with our seven counties?
They have already said, and there's already a legislative analysis answer to that, that they certainly would open their books, they certainly would give all the information they have, specifically of federal pass-throughs. I've heard worries that we're not going to have money for Caltrans. That's federal money. That's a pass-through. Nortech is a pass-through. We need to know those numbers, and the state needs to cooperate with us, and they're mandated to do so, and just like Lafco. You're familiar with Lafco. If we wanted to separate this county into two or the city into two, there's a cooperation necessary. It's a fact-finding, it's a nonpartisan thing.
Right.
Half the people in this movement, I'd say more than half are Democrats. In the Board of Supervisors, there was a Democrat that proposed, and two Republicans voted with.
I don't care about parties.
Well, it's not a partisan issue.
So -- now I lost what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
Oh, so if it's already mandated, have you already retrieved all of that information?
What information?
From the state?
No, because there's no place to request that information. There's no place to put it, because it has to be all the counties. We need to put our information in along with all the other counties, or it doesn't make any difference. Our information doesn't count without the balance. We -- Klasser County is very interested right now, tremendous amount of money there, bigger cities. Butte County just came aboard four to one, they're coming out next week. So as these things happen, we'll have more population, greater population, we'll finally reach that number as an entity, and things will stop at that point. We'll go to the state of California, and the state of California will sit down with us, we'll crunch numbers. That's what it's all about. We'll just understand what this is. And if it works, great. If it's wonderful, go. If it's not, we know. And then we revert to the --
Right, I get that part.
Same part, okay.
My last question was, you mentioned that the opponents
Right.
-- said something about logging with no regulations.
That's what they have in the ballot measure.
Because I didn't read that.
Well, I have a copy.
I must have missed it.
Would you like it? And it's highlighted.
Okay. I'll find it. Thank you. That was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? I want to say, I did meet with Mr. Funk today as well, and I also had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Hendrick, wherever you are. I know you're here. So, it was a good --
He's got my back.
He's got your back.
I was even glad to be along with us to get the --
Yeah, I'll bet. But in mentioning that, one thing I didn't ask you is, I was impressed with the idea of the representation, and it certainly would be better for us to have representation. It was more equitable in Sacramento. I tell the story once in a while, because it was a real poignant story to me. Years ago, I went to a county board meeting, and in my capacity as a county employee, and we had a lobbyist there. And the lobbyist said, "We should be exempted from all mandates of the state, because together with the eighteen small counties, we were a rounding error." A rounding error with the state. So that kind of disempowerment, I understand the interest in doing something because of that feeling of disempowerment. My question to you, though, is, is there any other way to get at increased representation other than the creative -- creating a whole new state? That seems extreme.
Ever since 1964, and it may be extreme, but it may not be the only way. Since 1964, we've been casting about for a way. And the problem is, we can go on a direct train to the Supreme Court to overthrow what's considered a really weak ruling, easily overthrown, and that's Reynolds versus Sims, but we have to have what's called standing. You see that on television all the time, you see the newspaper, you can't go before a court unless you have a standing before that. That's a four-part step. Number one, you have to have injury, you have to have been damaged, and we certainly are without representation. Number two, you have to have a solution to take care of that, to make it better, to cure it, as it were. That's the state of Jefferson. Number three, you have to pursue that with great diligence. We're certainly doing that. Number four, you have to be denied. So if it's denied by the legislature at any level, then we have standing to over to court and flip it over. And the interesting part, I think I shared it with a couple of you, the -- I think in that process, when they see us go into court, these senators down in Los Angeles and San Francisco are going to realize, apparently, this is a real winnable lawsuit. And when the Supreme Court comes down and says, "That was a bad idea," and it gives us back our senators, every one of the L.A. County senators are going to have to give up their job, except for one, because their seats are coming up here, to Siskiyou and Modoc and Delnérd County. They're probably going to say, "Wait a minute," and throw us out of the state anyway, cut us free.
They're not going to want to go back.
No, they're not. I shared this, if you -- not many of you are old enough to remember a guy by the name of Yogi Berra. He was a catcher for the New York Yankees. And he said some really stupid stuff. They call them yogiisms. But if you listen to the second time, repeat them and muddle over, they were brilliant. And one of my favorites of a yogiism, and there should be a book of those, was --
Isn't the time exceeded for --
Well, we're in a question-and-answer period right now.
One of them was, "When you come to a fork in the road, take it." That sounds stupid until you realize what he meant. Don't just stand there, take it. Take one of them. There may be another one down the line, too. Or you might come back over and take the other one. But don't just stand there and do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions amongst the council? Okay, thank you, sir. So I would ask for Mr. Hendrick to come on up and give us an eloquent ten-minute presentation,
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kevin Hendrick. I'm the campaign director for Keep It California, No on Measure A. I have a couple friends who are here in support.
Stand up, California.
Oh! That's good. Thank you for coming.
There could have been more in unison, but go ahead.
I'll try better next week when we're at the Supervisors. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service to the community. I've watched you work as a council, and I've found that your actions have been both thoughtful and appropriate. I also want to show respect for Aaron Funk and the Jeffersonians, although it just occurred to me, that does sound like a good music group, doesn't it? I'm going to give credit to anybody who's trying to make the community better, and I just happen to disagree with this plan, and I hope after this is over, we'll find a way that we can all work together. That's my hope. But it did occur to us that nobody came to the city -- ever came to the city council to ask you what you thought about this, the Supervisors, whether there would be negative consequences if the city was to withdraw from California. So we want you to consider the possibility that this new state could be formed. Would this be good or bad for the city? What do we have to lose if we break away from California? This is the question before you today. On February 25th, the Board of Supervisors voted to place this advisory measure on the June 3 ballot. Quote, "In order to provide an opportunity for voters to voice their opinion regarding separation from California to form a new state of Jefferson," end quote. Keep It California No on Measure A was formed is a nonpartisan political committee formed to represent the interests of Republican, Democratic, and independent voters who oppose separation from California. We have two main goals. One is to inform voters of all the financial impacts and practical consequences of separating from California, and two, to encourage all eligible voters to voice their opinion on June 3 by voting no on Measure A. With this in mind, we encourage you to consider the financial risks and uncertainties of continuing down this path to Jefferson. It is your fiduciary responsibility to evaluate these risks and take a position opposing this potential action if you believe that it could negatively affect your mission. I've watched you all work. You know how to do this. As the Jefferson proponents make their pitch today, try to identify anything that looks like a plan. If your staff came to you with a proposal for a project that would have a major impact on Crescent City, would you expect to see a detailed plan? Would you want to evaluate and question the budget assumptions of that plan? Would you ask lots of questions before making a decision, or would you just go along with it silently? If the state of Jefferson was a startup business, no smart investor would ever risk money on such a speculative venture. Yet we're being asked to invest our future in this shaky proposition without a business plan or any kind of fiscal analysis. The strategy to form a new state of Jefferson appears to be vote first and ask questions later. Without any details on the financial risk, we're ready to -- some are ready to rush headlong into this reckless experiment. Proponents have made overly broad promises that everything will be better and it will all cost less. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. The dream of starting over with a new state is alluring until you take a look at the reality of life in the state of Jefferson. The current configuration of the state of Jefferson forms a cluster of the poorest rural counties in California. Reorganizing all of these counties into one destitute state will not reduce poverty or unemployment. We will continue to face the same challenges, except we will no longer be subsidized by the state of California. Delnérd County gets back more than twice the money that local taxpayers pay in. If we separate, we will lose millions of dollars for roads, education, social services for youth, family, and seniors. Promises of lower taxes and smaller government means these services will be cut or must be paid through other means. The state of California has an economic output that surpasses most countries. Jobs funded by the state through our schools, county, parks, prison, police, and nonprofit communities provide living wage employment for our community, for our local economy. We know that breaking away from California will result in a loss of $32 million every year for our local schools. This is why the County Board of Education voted unanimously to oppose Measure A and adopted the Keep It California resolution that you have in your agenda. Balancing the fact that the proponents of this new state have not proposed a plan for funding education, and the real risk of losing $32 million in funding, the Board of Education made an informed choice and decided it was not worth taking the risk on this uncertainty. Will this reduction in school funding affect the people who live in Crescent City? If the answer is yes, then you should adopt a position to oppose this new state. County CAO reported that the county budget will lose $34 million in annual funding from California. This includes $18 million in funding lost for essential social services, such as Medi-Cal, CalWorks, and food stamps. Will this reduction in county services affect the people who live in Crescent City? If the answer is yes, then you should speak up against forming this new state. I understand that some of you would rather not take a position, but there is no doubt that forming a new state would have a profound effect on Crescent City. If the voters pass this advisory measure, it is possible that the Board of Supervisors will -- will adopt the resolution to secede from California. After that, there is little that the city can do, and we just heard, you won't have a seat at the table after that. The decision for the council members today is to either remain passive and let the county decide the future of Crescent City, or to speak up and declare a position. This is an opportunity for council members to have this discussion. No matter how you vote today, excuse me, the council members were elected to lead this city and represent the interests of the city. Who else will speak up for Crescent City if the city council members remain silent? The time for you to act is now. And we say, no matter how you vote today, I do want to thank you for having the courage to have this public discussion on this very important issue. If we can have a better informed public, we will have a better informed vote. However, I am asking you to adopt this resolution that you have in front of you today. Resolution, as you know, is no more than a method for the city council to express an opinion. This is your chance to vote. We encourage you to adopt the Keep It California resolution as a statement of your opposition to Measure A and your pledge to Keep It California. And I have music.
Oh. Technology. You can just sing it. There we go. Technology. Got to love it.
Crescent City, California. Speak up now before it's done. We don't want to change the name to Crescent City, Jefferson. Keep It California. Keep It California. Crescent City, California. Keep It California.
I think that's the first time we've ever actually had a dog and pony show.
That's right.
We aims to please for your entertainment. I would expect nothing less. We may have some other people that want to make comments, but I've been designated as a representative, and my last thought to you is, one thing I've discovered by standing up in the mode that I am, is that if you lead, people will follow.
Okay. Thank you very much. So as before, I'll bring this back to the council for clarification or questions.
I guess it's just me again. I wanted to address just a couple of your points. One was that you said if we had a staff member bring a plan to us that didn't have, you know, a business plan presented to us, of course, we wouldn't vote on it. What we would do is tell them to go back to work with their team and their manager and devise a plan, and come back to us with all the details and a fiscal impact. And I believe that's what Measure A's goal is. I don't believe that if this council takes a vote tonight or doesn't take a vote, that we're being passive. I think that we are allowing a public forum for both sides to state their facts, their, you know, their perception of the facts, so that our constituents can be informed.
And I do appreciate that, as I stated in my comments.
I know. I wanted to ask you a question. When you say that there are $32 million that this Board of Education would lose, am I correct in hearing that's what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So how did you come up with that number? And then also, how do you address the dollars that will, that the state of Jefferson says will be, come from federal funds?
This is just state funding for the local schools, and the $32 million number came from the school staff when we went to the school board.
So they received $32 million from the state of California?
Yes.
Okay.
It's $32 million out of, I think, $36 million total budget. It's a huge chunk for the school.
Okay. And then how do you address the federal funds that come to our county?
I mean, what do you mean?
They were saying that a lot of the funds are federal pass-through funds to the state of California that then come to our county?
Some portion of that may be federal funds. It's unclear. And that's the part that's uncertain, is the, Don Olson, the superintendent of, the county superintendent of schools, I think acted responsibly to look at the numbers that he had. What he knows is what the plan is now. And our plan is the California plan. So that's our plan. It is incumbent on the people that are proposing an alternative to have details on how that would work. And that's part of my point, is that is somewhat lacking for reasonable people to make a decision. I'm not sure there's enough, I know there's not enough information out there, and I think it's a benefit to have as much information out there as possible.
I agree that there's not enough information, for sure. And the financial risks could be huge. I, that I agree with.
Yeah. Well, and I did meet with Rick today, and I told him, and I say it often, I've been very impressed with this city council, so I certainly didn't mean any disrespect to you. In fact, I was thinking of you specifically about how you ask good questions when projects come forward. I think that's appropriate, and I would expect no less from you. So I-
That was it for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Anything from any other council members?
Let me just say one final thing, which is regardless of how this turns out, my main concern is diversion of limited resources that the city has, the county has, that the community has, away from things that are real, active, live, need attention now kinds of issues. And my concern is that we get distracted by the massive effort of trying to figure out what it would take to new state, to form a new state, because you know it would be huge, and it's going to be years to go through that process. I mean, in the meantime, we have things that we agree on. I mean, I've been to Roger Gitlin's Town Hall. I've been to some of the Tea Party meetings. For example, Last Chance Grade is a huge issue. It's important for all of us, and we need to develop a consensus on working together on that. My concern is, depending on how we handle this as we move forward, that this issue may be divisive for our community and therefore unproductive.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So we're at that part of our procedures in which we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. So if you would please raise your hand, I'll just recognize you, and you can come up and make a public comment. Again, it's limited to three minutes, and please tell us if you're a member, excuse me, a resident of the state or the county. We'll go with the front row here. Gentlemen? Did I say state or the county? Yeah. Which state? Go ahead.
What state do you represent?
I'm confused. My name is Joe Lavender. I'm a resident of Del Norte County. I have three points I'd like to make. One is in regard to the young lady that made the comment about the filming, that it was not done in Del Norte County, not because of Del Norte County, but because of the state of California, taxes, regulations, or whatever. They went to Canada. The other point is, I went to UCLA at a time when it cost $150 to take 15 graduate units. That's a California that used to exist. It's not that way now. The other, my final point is, why did Toyota move to Texas from California? New York is making advertisements right now where you can get 10 years tax-free for new businesses. I do not see that in California. I do not see that in Del Norte County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person? Yes, sir.
I'm going to agree with Kevin, and I, it looks nice. I stand Andy Larson with the county, and I'm just a citizen, and that's how I feel about just-
Americanity's his name. Excuse me? Can you state his name for the record? He just did. Would you repeat it, please? Your name? Would you just repeat it again?
Andrew Larson.
Thank you.
County.
We got it now. Thanks.
And basically, as a citizen, and I know what the Constitution says about representation and how, but California has a problem with representation when it comes to Northern California. Can things be done? Yes, they can be done. You're not going to turn around and change representation. I personally have not a problem with a new state, but I see how much trouble that could be in finances and other things. But should we take an avenue? Should we say, yes, we are going, you can, you're not going to make a state tomorrow. It is not going to happen right away. But Southern California has to hear the voice that says, "If we have to, we will." And we are thinking about this because we are misrepresented. We live by what Southern California and LA decide, that they have a problem, they make a law, they are represented down there, and we get to live with it. That is a sad thing for all of Northern California. Does it have to be a new state? If that's what it takes, but as Martha will point out, you don't change representation that easily. We can't get to say, "Okay, we want more representatives. We want another senator." But the message has to go to Southern California that we are misrepresented, and a yes vote tells Southern California it doesn't build a state tomorrow.
Thank you, Andy. Okay. Next person that wants to comment publicly. Okay. Yes, in the back, please. Yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Sanders, the county, and I'm the Del Norte Republican Party chairman. And I want to let you know that the Del Norte County Republican Central Committee did endorse this measure. And we do appreciate the Board of Supervisors allowing the people to make that decision, unlike the school board, which only had one side of, just had the Keep California side. This does just get the conversation going. I know that Kevin had said he has, it sounds like he has proof of a lot of stuff, but if it really hasn't been looked into, I'm not sure how he knows. It's a one-sided. He doesn't have all the facts, and that's what we're pursuing as far as the Measure A and just state of California, or, I'm sorry, the state of Jefferson. Why not look into this? Why not see if it's even feasible on both sides? What do we have to lose? We have, we could be gaining something. But if we don't step forward and go through this process, that we'll never know. And as Aaron said, then it'll close the door, and that's it. No more possible additional representation. So just in closing, I just ask that you would vote a yes or, or nothing, or just let the people themselves vote. But I prefer if you would support Measure A. But again, it is the people who are making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Martha McClure from the county. I have been a lifelong resident, except for when I was away at college, and have always considered Del Norte County, California, my home. I am fearful of this project because it is spinning out of control. And when we want to start talking about Sims versus Reynolds, and having the 10 poorest counties in California go to the Supreme Court and overturn a decision, we need to think again. Because that's the only way you're going to have one senator from each county, because you can't rewrite the Constitution of the United States in relationship to Sims versus Reynolds. And then I want to talk about the children. The 10 counties right now, if we agreed to move into this new state, our children would not be able to go away and become a doctor or an attorney, because there are no colleges that offer that within this little 10-state region. Currently, my children can reach the entire 1,100 miles of California and select an educational college and not pay abus state tuition. So we're beginning to risk children and their future based on what appears to me to be a bunch of angry guys. Because that's what I'm seeing this as. I don't mind paying my taxes in California, because my children received a great education. I received a great education. I have had an opportunity to work in California, and I love California. I was just recently on the inland empire coming up, and it's desolate. And I'm not really ready to be part of the inland empire when I know what we offer California's children here, what we offer California families. And when it comes time for the county to lose over $30 million, and the school district to lose over $30 million, I would like you to take a position. It's not, are you voting yes or no? I want you to inform your electorate, because your electorate deserves that, because you have the knowledge. You have the knowledge of what you currently receive from the state of California as a small city. And we also know that we have the small cities that we are represented at the state level and RCRC. It's being told to us that there's no representation. We have representation if we don't blow it. And we can't blow it by looking silly. We need to think and form partnerships. And we need to form partnerships with California. And I would be glad to answer any question that you might have if I've puzzled you on any of my statements. But thank you for listening. Thank you for doing this. I urge you to take a position, not asking to vote no, but asking the electorate to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sir, you've had your hand up.
Chuck Tweed. I'm a lifelong resident of Del Norte County. I live in the county, but I've also lived in the city. And I didn't bring a rooting crowd here. I brought 1,500 vetted signatures from our residents. I've got 400 or 500 more, maybe 1,000 more, because you've seen me out at the tables around the town, that said that, yeah, we want to look into this. Anyway, that's my group of people. And she pointed over here and said, "All I see is a bunch of angry men." I'm not angry. And except for one fact, I've educated my children. I've worked hard to educate my children. And I've had to export three of them to get a decent job. They're not here. I want to give those jobs here, right? I want to develop Northern California into something that would keep my children here, not export them to other counties, other states that offer them the jobs. And I have a hard time going, doing anything better than Karen there, but I've talked to everybody in the county, in the city. I was in front of Safeway, Walmart, Ace Hardware, and stuff like this. There's really a lot of interest in this, just because the people of Del Norte County and the Crescent City don't feel represented in the state of California. And that's all I'm asking for, is I want representation, right, in a state that I live in. I got to tell you a quick story. I used to have representation here, up to 1965. I could walk next door and talk to Don Clausen, Senator Don Clausen, right? I could go downtown, and I could talk to my assembly member, right? And now, when I tried to get into Thompson for a year, he would never see me. That's not representation. My assembly member is in Sacramento. That's not representation. I love to pay my taxes. I love the benefits that I receive from paying my taxes, right? But also, I want represented for those taxes. And by the way, I'm a lifelong resident of Crescent City. I'm a college graduate. I'm a Vietnam veteran of three years and 10 months in country. And I love my country. I love Northern California. I just want representation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other public comment? If we can, can we just go back over this direction?
Hi, I'm Patricia Black, and I'm actually a city resident. So since we're having a conversation here, and since it appears that there's very little information to go on, I just wanted to throw out some things that I'm aware of that would have to change if this were no longer part of California. What I'm thinking about is all the teachers who are part of the California State Teachers' Retirement System. Now, I'm retired, so I'm fine. I can move to Oregon, I can go wherever I want and still keep my pension. I can go wherever I want and still keep my pension. What happens to the people that are halfway through a career? And then all of a sudden, they are forced to leave Crescent City or to switch to the pension system of another state, which may or may not... I mean, then they've got two things going. They might wind up with nothing from here and nothing from there. I think the same thing applies to state employees. They either leave here or they move under a new pension system. The State of California, for people that are in SSI because they're disabled or aged, the State of California tax extra money on to the federal amount. Would the State of Jefferson have the money to do that? If they didn't, that would be a loss to our community in terms of people being able to spend money here. The State of California chose to expand Medicaid so that people between 19 and 64, single people, people that aren't linked to children, now have health insurance coverage and they're able to go see the doctor. What would the State of Jefferson do? These are questions that I think are really important to be answered before you even begin to entertain the idea of another state. And so this is just... I'm trying to throw this into the discussion. And thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Sir?
Hi, my name is Matthew Beer. I live in Del Norte County. And just wanted to say thank you for having this discussion. And I would like to ask you to support Measure A. Because once again, everyone here has, you know, some real serious concerns. We all want what's best for Del Norte County. I appreciate Ms. McClure's passion. I'm not an angry man. But I'm also a longtime resident of Del Norte County. And I am angry that a lot of the fields that I used to play in as a boy, I would not let my children play on there now because of the homeless that in camp all over this area. The beaches. We heard this, you know, the Film Commission make a statement that, you know, business is being run out of this area due to the oppressive taxes that we face and we pay every year. I would just like to say, you know, a vote for Measure A is nothing more than exploring our options. What options that we have to become a better community, a stronger community, and a more vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Dot?
Matt, were you a city or county resident?
County.
Thank you.
Yeah, Don Gillespie. And I'm a lifetime resident of Del Norte County. And just want to say, you know, it's hard to argue against... Let's look at all options. That's what Measure A is asking us to, just have a chance to look things over. But I feel like we're being asked to make a decision based on platitudes. And it's hard to go this way if you're just offered platitudes such as we have no representation. Our representation is very poor. Well, what specifically? Where has the representation that we have now in California shown to be poor? Are we unhappy that Southern California brought us Redwood National Park? Are we unhappy that our representatives, state and federal, brought us the money for our new harbor? Are we unhappy with the state representatives that brought us funding to maintain our highways? I attended Jefferson State gathering at the fairgrounds. I think it was in January. And it was touted to be their opportunity to nail down some specifics, especially on the economic aspects of this movement. And what I heard was that we can no longer afford to be part of California. That was the big, you know, the big decision on that day or the big effort. And yet, this is a time when California is really coming around financially. We're reducing our deficit. There's more money for our schools. I was told that we don't need a highway patrol because the county sheriff can patrol our highways. We don't need a Caltrans because the county roads department can take care of our highways. These are platitudes. These are just things offered up with no sound basis. And for that reason, I think it's... This measure is not really something that's going to do our community good. And financially, if fiduciary responsibilities look into this are strong. And so I just want to say again, you know, thanks for the opportunity for this discussion. It's nice to hear everybody's point of view. And I encourage you to take a stand. I think Martha is accurate in saying we need leadership now and kind of a message to the public from our city council. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Okay. Sir, you want to come forward?
I'm John Parmentier, a resident of the county. And creating a state is almost an undoable thing. It would require a majority vote in Congress. And that just won't happen because it would cause every state other than... Every state would lose power by creating another state. Just using the Senate, for example, there's 100 senators. If there's another state, there'd be 102 senators. Every state would lose power. They'd lose 2% of their voting power. And you're just not going to get the majority of the states to want to create a new state. It's not in their best interest. It's in our best interest, perhaps. It might be in our best interest to create a state. But all those other 50 states out there will not... They'll lose their own power. They'll lose power. So it's not going to happen. So the reason that I don't even want to consider creating a state is because it will cost us resources to investigate it. And not only time, you know, one of the things is that one of our county supervisors would sit on the board that would examine the new state. That's going to cost time. That's going to be a county supervisor that's taken away and distracted. And to use another example, the Solid Waste Management Authority just spent $30,000 to hire a consultant to find out whether they were needed or not. And this is just a tiny little community with a little sewage or a solid waste thing.
Thirty-three.
So how much money do you think it's going to cost a consultant or any organization to find out how much a new state or whether the new state is viable? It will cost millions and millions of dollars to find out whether a new state is viable. Who's going to pay for that? It's not going to be the Jefferson organization. It's going to be the counties that pay for that analysis. Because if you want to in on it, you have to do the financial analysis on it. So unfortunately, you can't tell whether it's financially viable, perhaps under the premise that we don't know what counties are in. But the other thing is logic. I just... Common sense says you're not going to be able to generate enough income to run a state. It's just not going to happen. Industries are not going to locate in Del Norte County. When you take that flight from Del Norte down to San Francisco, what you see is a bunch of mountains. And industry simply is not going to come here. There isn't the infrastructure. We have Interstate 5 runs through. But there are no other viable places for businesses to locate here. It's like, you know, using the Toyota example. A car manufacturer is not going to come to Northern California. When you look at a satellite map of the world, there's a dark spot right here. We're halfway between Portland and San Francisco. And it's dark here because there is no infrastructure. You're not going to allure any business here. And so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Actually, you had your hand up. Thank you.
My name is Janet Gilbert, and I live in the county. Listening to the comments, I think that I was raised with my siblings in Metropolis in Southern California. And none of all of us live in the same county as our parents. We had access to wonderful education. We were well-educated, as you said, your child was. That doesn't mean that they're going to stay in the county just because you have jobs in your county. We had access for wonderful jobs where we grew up and we all chose to move out into the world and experience it. So a successful education doesn't mean you stay home. It's no guarantee. Secondly, I talked to my son, who now lives in Metropolis in California. And I told him about this Jefferson movement and that I went to the town hall meeting. And he kind of laughed. And he said, well, let's look at it from the other perspective. I pay my taxes in the State of California. And maybe I'd be happy to see Jeffersons become a state so that none of my tax dollars that I'm paying to California go to your county. I'd like to see my tax dollars stay in my county where the money's earned. So there's no real... It's a multi-diverse problem. And you look at it from other perspectives. And you could see that you're angry that you don't feel accurately represented. Well, maybe a lot of other Californians wish that they weren't supporting us with their tax dollars. If we get back two times as much tax as we pay into the system and the California is returned to us for services that this county does need. I would ask, and I don't know if anyone knows the answer. Maybe Karen, she's not here yet. She's gone. She works for Caltrans. Where would the money come from to improve last chance grade if we're not in the State of California? That is a state highway, not an interstate. So it's not...
Go ahead and talk.
It's a different relationship, how much funding partnerships you can create. So I think that we do deserve representation. I think that one way we might get that is through an initiative. Or why does California even have a bicameral legislation if it doesn't have a senator per county? That's only fair, that the assembly should be based on representation by population. And the county should have a voice, a legitimate, fair voice with every other county. But I don't know that making the State of Jefferson is the solution. That's what I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir. You had your hand up. I'm afraid you're going to have to come on up to the podium this time.
Good evening. My name is John Murdis. I think I know all of you up there from various things. I haven't heard one big... Actually, a pair of questions answered or even asked. And that is what's going to happen to our rivers, particularly the clambers. Now, fortunately, we have a state, and the feds are now insisting we have water in our rivers to support the salmon fishery. But I do remember back in 2002, when the people to the east of here took bore the water and we had a notorious fish kill. If they had the power east of the coastal range and we only have one senator, what's that going to mean? What's going to happen to our fisheries, the tourists who come here to fish? That's a question I haven't heard asked or even sort of alone answered yet. The second point, I... Yes, there are a lot of questions to be asked and answered. And these questions should be answered before we vote yes on forming a new state. As it is, we're being asked to sign a blank contract. Not just a blank check, but a blank contract. And I think that's a very bad idea. I'd never do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
I'm Victoria Dickey. I live in the county. So I hope you pay attention to what I say. And don't just disregard it because I don't live in your jurisdiction. Kelly, I thought you've made some excellent comments tonight. I want to commend you on those. Much has been made about the fact that California gives us, gives us, gives us. And we only give back a portion. California's in financial trouble right now. How long do you think they can afford to continue to just give? At what point are they going to get tired of it? I think they've already cut back on the four fair boards and all those kinds of things. People were asked for just one example of why is there overregulation? The International Building Code, I believe, was adopted a couple of years ago. And one of the things that came in is everybody has to have a white roof. Now, if you know anything about white roofs and sealed-down roofs, they've got to get warm enough to make the tar stick to the lower levels. Someone came up, and they were here during our hottest season. And by looking around, they said, oh, well, we won't enforce that rule in Del Norte County. It should never have been passed. If they did enforce it, what would happen is we'd have large frisbees all over the community. Much has been made about the fact that $32,000-something was spent on a study on how to better handle the solid waste department. Didn't hear anybody say anything about the $29,000 that was missing and that they've been trying to figure out where it went. I would rather look silly and do something than to act in an uninformed manner. I have made it my point in life never to try to intentionally use the mushroom theory. And if those of you who are here don't know what that is, it's when someone puts you in the dark and feeds you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Gellman.
It's kind of emotional. I'm Roger Gellman. I live in the city. I'm also Supervisor District One. I'm hearing about angry people. I'm hearing about platitudes. I'm hearing about we're going to lose $32 million. That's not true. Let me remind all of you up there on the Crescent City Council. This is an advisory vote. It has no teeth. And when it... If it grows teeth, then we'll have more information. This is a vote to explore the future possibility of joining a group of other frustrated counties, and that's what they are, frustrated counties who lack representation, to see if this can work. Frankly, I'm undecided. I haven't decided which way I want to go on this. I want to continue the conversation. So yes, I would support Measure A. But I don't know if Jefferson State's going to work because I need more information. And the only way that I'm going to get more information, and it's not several million dollars to access that information, is through a process called reconciliation. And it happens in Sacramento. So if you're going to vote on this, I'm going to ask you to vote yes on Measure A. I'm not sure the city of Crescent City and the city council needs to vote on this. But if you're going to vote, continue the conversation. Let's keep this open and objective. And let's take the drama out of this. We are not a new state because of this vote. We're going to continue the exploration and continue the information gathering so we can find out if this is going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gellman. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Eileen?
Eileen Cooper. Perhaps not angry, but perhaps thoughtless. Since the Board of Supervisors took a vote, they... And when they took that vote, they did so without any financial reports from any of their divisions and departments. Since they took that vote, departments had a chance to study the situation from a financial perspective. And every report coming in since that vote has been very troubling. And we have gotten reports from the Transportation Commission, from the school district, from the Mental Health and Health Department. And each of those reports spoke to the financial suicide that we would be committing if we went down this path. So it's not... As though there has not been some information about this. so it's not, as though there has not been some information about this, it's just that it's very, very bleak. Unfortunately, the Board of Supervisors felt bullied into taking a vote right before they had a meeting about. That was my, that's my impression, before they had in financial information. They did so so that it could get on the ballot timely, but they did so without fiduciary responsibility. And unfortunately, all the reports from their departments, um, that came in since, um, are, are, are very bleak. You can go and talk, if you need more time, to those people. You can, if you've followed what happened in the following informational meeting by the different departments, you already know this. Um, so I, I, I say just, also, I, I am proud to be a Californian. I, I, I'm thankful for Southern California and the rest of California for investing so much into this county, for, for investing us with a, an incredible education system, for investing us with all kinds of health care benefits, for investing us-
Thank, thank you, Eileen. That, that's our new alarm. So, just so you know what it is.
Class is over.
Okay.
Classes, yeah. Thank you very much for coming up. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, um, I'll, I'll, according to our procedure, I'll go ahead and bring this back to the city council for further discussion. Uh, before I do so, though, I wanna thank all of you for the calm and, and professional demeanor you all used tonight. Thank you very much, and it shows us we're, we have differing views, but we're still friends and neighbors, and so I appreciate that a lot. Hope that continues after our decision. Okay, so we'll bring this back, we'll bring this back to the, to the council itself. Uh, any comments, or how would you like to proceed?
I have quite a few comments to make. Um, I, I've been looking at this, looks like a little brochure that was included in our agenda packet to encourage people to vote yes on Measure A, so I wanna address some of the, it's titled Future Tripliquet Headlines, and it has Jefferson sidesteps California bankruptcy, when in fact, California is not looking at bankruptcy, we're looking at spending, paying down some of our, our, our deficit, and, um, we're, we're looking at a, at a very bright financial future for California. So that is extremely misleading. And, um, it has another bullet point, business relocations hit record high. Well, we just had a headline in, in the tripliquet for, um, a possibility of Big Five relocating here. That's thanks to the city's hard work, our city staff, in working to bring businesses here. So we're doing that already. And then it talks about, um, replacing the Coastal Commission with the state of Jefferson. Aren't you just replacing another bureaucracy with one that you're already complaining about? So I don't see how that's changing anything. And then tourism skyrockets in New, New State? I don't see how. I really don't. Last chance grade bypass completed? That's a pipe dream if I ever heard one. How are you going to get the money? That is a Caltrans project. It's not a local transportation commission project. I sit on that, that commission, I have, ever since I was elected in 2008. That is not, that's state funds. So, I think that you're misleading in what you're telling people. It really bothers me a lot in what you're telling people, and, and that's the point, is where are you going to get the money to form this new state, and how are you going to operate it? You don't have the government structure set up, and that is the problem. That's why I signed on to oppose Measure A, and that is why people who oppose Measure A are telling you, this is not a good plan, that it's a waste of resources, and I think the city council needs to look at it very hard from a fiscal standpoint. We have a big, huge loan for our, our reconstruction of the wastewater treatment facility with the state. What would happen to that? Voter ID required in Jefferson, Jefferson elections? Guess what? They just overturned that in the state of Wisconsin. All of these things are, are there, you know, none of this stuff sounds like a good plan. These are all pipe, pipe dreams. They're not really, you know, these are, these are things that people, their idealo- ideology is something that maybe some people believe in, and that's fine, but this is something that you would have, I mean, you'd have to change everything, and everything that you even, the whole country would have to. Um, the US Supreme Court returns jurisdiction of federal lands to the state of Jefferson? That would not happen. I'm sorry, but it won't happen. So, when you're trying to think about how to do something that would improve the community, improve our county, work within the system is what I'm saying. We, we really need to work together. Instead of having a vote on an advisory measure that might happen, try and work within our system, change it, work to get to know your, your elected officials at the state level. I, I think that we have some really good people coming up for election, that if you got to know them, the, the people that are looking like they'll get elected have promised to put offices in our county. We have some good people that could be elected, and get to know them. We have a really good congressman right now, Jared Huffman. He's in our county all the time. Get to know the people that we have in office right now, and, and curry, um, your relationship with the people that we have elected. They do represent us, and they care about us. That's my, my spiel.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Okay, other council members? Mr. Aneah?
Yes. I wanna thank everybody for their opinions tonight. It's always good to, to air them at meetings, and several people tonight said basically the same thing, that how is that gonna affect the city and our residents? And, I don't know. We haven't done a study on how much state money we would lose, or whatever. We have not done that study. And so we're gonna need to do that before, as far as I'm concerned, before voting, because we, how can we vote if we don't have that information? This is an advisory vote. In fact, they mailed the absentee ballots today. So for me, it's, there's no way I can vote yes or no, because we don't have the money. Now, someone spoke about the county, not, not the money, we don't have the information. So the county is getting their financial information, how it's gonna affect them. We don't know how it's gonna affect us, because we have not authorized or had our city manager and staff look into that. Tonight's the first time that it's been brought up, and so that will take time to do. And those are, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Gasman?
Well, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and talking, too. Um, you know, my background, I have a journalism major, and all I've heard pretty much is one side of the story. This advisory vote, which would be the will of the people, if it goes through, would just have Delnor County join the rest of the counties. And I think that's the biggest thing, is that right now is in such flux that they don't have a base to do their numbers from. And so they need to have that advisory vote. If it goes yes, then we're in. If it goes no, then we're out. But as they stated, we can continue on this road until it looks like it's not a viable thing for us to do. They are in step three of probably step million right now. We have a long way to go, and everybody's putting it down. This is America. We do things here. We listen to the people, and we also do things that are impossible. Now, if we want representation from the state, we continue on this path to form the state of Jefferson. If we don't make it, we put a nice, big word out there that we are not represented, excuse me, represented from our point of view, in that something has to be done. And there's no way, if we do nothing and, and go against this vote, then we do nothing. We just stand there in the road and look at the fork. So, I would say, let's get all the information, let's do the vote, which is on the ballot, let the people decide if they don't want Delnor County to be there, and keep it California. You have all the right in the world to campaign against this. But, we have to have the vote to see where we wanna go as a county. And until we know the numbers, we won't know how it's gonna affect our city. And, and a lot of other stuff comes through federal pass-through, highways, school funding, other taxes that we receive, that are dispersed through the state. So if those went from the feds directly to Jefferson, and they don't know how they're going to form their government yet, because that's probably step nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. So, we're not there yet. I say get more information, and let's see what the people decide on June. Thank you, Ron. Kelly?
Thank you. Well, I try to pride myself in doing my homework, um, so that I become as educated as I can before I make a decision. Um, I'm, you know, I tend to lean one way, and then I lean another way tonight, um, listening to everybody, but that's why we sit up here, uh, so that we can actually listen to what everybody has to say, and understand your concerns. And I actually appreciate hearing from the opposite, uh, side tonight, because I had not heard from any of them until this past two days. Um, I went to the Jefferson State Town Hall meeting to just, uh, understand where the, where they were coming from. It was more of a, kind of a rah-rah rally kind of, uh, um, format, um, not a lot of facts, um, but certainly a lot of passion. And some of that passion I share, um, in that I feel like our state has become very overregulated. Um, I feel that we, we do lack representation. And I'm not saying that the representation that we have is bad. I'm saying that we, uh, they cover a lot of ground in the state of California, and we tend to be left out quite a bit. I also know that a lot of laws are made in the south of, in the southern, uh, area of California that are, that do affect us. I'm, I'm, I've always been, uh, very concerned about our fishing regulations and the rules that we have to abide by up here that really make absolutely no sense at all. Um, I'm very concerned about the financial impacts should this actually take place, um, but I'm also, uh, curious what those financial impacts might look like. And, uh, you know, I, nobody has been able to answer my question about funding, and how the funding actually funnels through to the new state of Jefferson. And, you know, I think what I'm hearing is that we're gonna, from one side I'm hearing, we're gonna lose all that money. From the other side, I think I'm hearing that we're gonna be a new state, so we're going to receive our portion of the money. We're gonna have a new, uh, JDOT, right? Not Oregon Department, Caltrans, be a new, you know, transportation or whatever, and they're gonna receive those same kinds of funds. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I, that's what I hear from both sides. Um, one, you know, the other thing about representation is that, um, I've been on the council, this is my eighth year. Uh, my term ends in November, so I may not have to, to endure this, I'm not sure. Um, but, you know, just for, as an example, when we had our beautiful harbor, um, uh, grand opening ribbon cutting just, just here last month, uh, I called, and, and I, uh, sit on the Chamber Board of Directors as an appointed position from the city, and I chaired the economic summit for our county. I called every single one of our representatives to see if they were coming to the harbor grand opening, if they would also maybe come a little bit early and be a guest at our economic summit and talk to our local business people. I was turned down by every single one of them, because guess what? Not one single one of them came to our grand opening at the harbor. I was very disappointed by that. Um, they did, you know, send representatives, um, but you still feel like you're getting the short end of the stick, I feel. Um, I think our California economy is turning around. I know that the city has seen a, a small increase in our revenues, um, but our expenses continue to go up. So even though our revenues start to, to go up a little bit, and we have a little bit of hope, it's like the cost of everything just keeps climbing higher, and that's very frustrating, because it makes it very hard for us to make decisions. So I do think the California economy is starting to turn around a little bit, but I don't see, I'm not sure it will ever be what it used to be. Um, I don't think that our Board of Supervisors were bullied. Uh, I think that, uh, whether you believe in, you know, their, um, their beliefs, uh, I don't think any, I, not one of them, huh, sitting in, in these chairs up here, I don't, that couldn't easily be bullied. Um, they're very strong representatives, very smart people. Um, so I don't think that they were, they were bullied. Um, I do know that when I attended the Jefferson State Town Hall meeting, uh, Mike Sullivan was there, uh, Jerry Hemmingson was there, uh, Roger Gitlin was there, I don't remember if David was there. Um, but, you know, they, they too did, uh, their homework. Uh, I, I'm actually undecided, you know, like, so when, when this is on the, on the ballot, I'm still not sure how I'm gonna vote. Um, so, I don't know how I, uh, can be chastised for not providing leadership sitting up here, uh, because I'm not gonna tell the people how to vote. I don't think it's my job to tell them how to vote. I think it's my job to be educated, so that I make decisions that affect my city, and our, our processes, and the way that we conduct, uh, business. Um, I think that, you know, just like with the fluoride issue, um, I supported keeping fluoride in the water, but the people didn't, and it was my job to respect their vote. I tend to believe that this is a big enough issue. I hear fifteen hundred people signed a petition, you know, not quite as many as, that signed the hospital petition, but these are very big concerns for our citizens, and I feel like everybody has a right to speak. And I think that's really where I sit tonight.
Thank you, Kelly. Well, I, uh, I don't know if my fellow council members did this, but I had a hard time sleeping last night, because I, I'm, I'm struggling with this very issue myself. Uh, I admire idea people. I always wish I was an ideal, idea person, and I could float something as large as, as, as the state of Jefferson. I am a more cautious person by nature. Um, I, I'm, I'm concerned with the lack of tangible information we have to determine whether or not something's gonna be good for the city or not. Um, I, my, you know, we all kind of envision how this might go, and initially, I, I had planned to play the whole thing pretty safe, and the safe thing is to, is to hand it off to the voters. The voters are the ones that are doing the votes. And, and that may still be the way this will go. Um, but, you know, when I look at the, I, I too attended the Board of Supervisors meeting where the, uh, financial issues were, were presented, and I just, I sat there, and I just, I just couldn't imagine how this could pencil out. I mean, we get so much more than we receive, and when that doesn't necessarily come in, what are we, what are we going to do? Um, I, I'm concerned about the possible impacts. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, you, absolutely, but the impacts to education and social services that affect a lot of our, our people here in the city, especially the elderly, and we do have a, a impoverished city, and, and we do receive, uh, a lot of public services. I don't know, uh, if, yeah, I don't know what the treatment will be of cities of a new state. I don't know if, 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 will, cities will be treated differently. We don't know what the tax rates will be. We live by, by taxes and, and, uh, the transient occupancy tax, and we don't even know if that will continue to be allowed in the future. Um, and, and I know, this is all subject to study, and I, I appreciate the approach that the state of Jefferson people have, have made. But, um, I'm also very concerned, I, I wish we had more time, because I was concerned that we haven't had staff evaluate something this important, and give us a recommendation. I think Mr. Aneah, uh, alluded to that. And ordinarily, we'd have staff evaluating something like this. But, you know, at the end of the day, I, I was thinking about, regardless of how I feel personally, it's my responsibility really to act in the best interest of the city. And, uh, the first step is really to do no harm to the city. And I, I'm just really concerned that if this goes forward, harm could be done to the city. And- And for that reason, I, I'm not going to be able to, to vote for Measure A as, as a council member. I, I'm still, I still don't know how I, how the City Council will be proceeding, but I have great concerns over this measure, and, and I guess time will tell, and the voters will let us know. Thank you.
I appreciate what you just said, Mayor Hawley, in that, you know, it's always good to remind ourselves we're sitting up here to represent the best interest of the city. One thing I would caution to my constituents is, one of the concerns I do have is the cost of the study, and how that might actually come back and be a cost that our city, our citizens have to endure. And I, I think that's something that's important enough to mention.
So with that, I'm, I'm going to move forward and make a motion to pass the resolution of the City Council of Cusset City declaring opposition to Measure A, an advisory measure recommending separation from the state of California.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, that motion apparently dies for lack of a second. Is there any other proposal from the council today on this matter?
I, I personally feel that we have done our duty by bringing both sides of, of the issue to the public, taking public input, providing our concerns, our thoughts, our ideas, and I think that we don't have to, to take a side tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Aneah?
My quick comment is, next week, the, our city manager will be bringing us a proposed budget for next year, and I'm thinking that after, and some of that may say how much state money we do receive. And then after that vote in, on June 3rd, if it passes, then I think we need to, at a council meeting, discuss whether or not to have staff go ahead and find out just exactly how much that would cost us, or not cost us.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, again, thank you all for being here. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. It'll be quick, I think, but, but some of you may want to go home and get something to eat. Save some for us. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for being here and missing the Giants game.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Did they win? Did the Giants win?
Okay. So moving on, we don't have a lot of additional business to transact today. Legislative matters, Mr. Palazzo? None? Okay.
Are we almost done?
Thank you. Almost done. Did you want to go for a break? Okay, so no legislative matters. Council directives, city manager report? Anything to report, Mr. Palazzo? No?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Reports, concerns, referrals, council information. That's before us. Catherine, do you have something?
Let's see. I attended, as we all did, I believe, the ethics training on April 22nd. LAFCO, we had a meeting on the 28th and discussed the special district for the fair board. I also attended the Brookings City Council meeting with Janine Gallatioto, when she discussed them contributing to the airport JPA, as she did with us at a recent council meeting. And then Councilmember Shalong and our city manager Palazzo and I met with the healthcare district in a two-by-two on the 30th. And has anyone heard from them again for tomorrow?
Did you call them?
I didn't have a chance to contact them.
We had a tentative meeting slated for tomorrow with the two-by-two-by-two with the Board of Supervisors.
I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Okay. And that's it.
Catherine, did the Brookings Council vote on that, the airport?
They were, they had their budget meeting the next day, and they were going to vote on it then.
Okay. Mr. Gassman?
Let's see, we've got a good audience here, but somebody's listened to us at home, I hope.
Somebody out there.
Somebody at home. I was also at the LAFCO meeting, and a good presentation, the fair board. Again, Randy Hatfield, he's doing a lot of work there for the formation of the special district to support the fair. There's also at the underage drinking town hall that the kids at the high school put on. It was very informative, that's good speakers, and had lots of good audience participation on that. And I wish there was actually more kids there for that, but there was a lot of good people in the community. They needed an assembly to do that, to get that message out for them. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that on the 7th, which is this coming Wednesday, we have the walk and bike to school. So watch out for the big kids that are out there helping the little kids get to school. And if you see me on the corner, I'll be in the corner of Joe Hamilton, if you want to come by and say hi. While you're walking your child to school, that'd be great. I'd love to talk to you.
That's about it. Thank you. Mr. Aneah?
The ethics training, we all went to, of course. Had a couple of meetings canceled or postponed, and actually this week, we have Coast Transit, we have LTICO coming up, and I too will participate in that safe route to school, and I'll be standing on that same corner of Joe Hamilton to make sure that Mr. Gassino uses the crosswalk appropriately.
I'll be there, too.
I'll be there, too.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. We had a Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, and we are fast and furiously planning not only the Fourth of July, but also the Sea Cruise. So, let's see. I attended the healthcare two-by-two meeting last week with the healthcare district, and so just to give you an update on that meeting, they are interested in forming a JPA, I think is their goal, and getting support from the council. So I believe we are now going to be meeting tomorrow, if they follow through with the meeting time, with the healthcare district and the Board of Supervisors, I think is the next step. We have, I just wanted to mention that some of the local community volunteers, Operation Del Norte Cleanup, I think, is what they're called. The one I participated in with when we cleaned up the cemetery, on May 17th, they're actually doing a cleanup at the fairgrounds. So if you're interested in helping clean up the fair, that's the weekend that they'll be doing that. And I didn't think I was going to be here this week, but I think I am, so I would like to participate in the Walk and Bike to School Day. So I'm going to find a different corner. And I think that's it for me. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
You just have to talk to Karen Phillips. She'll assign a corner, too.
Yeah, you'll get a corner.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. Actually, it wasn't a meeting, it was a, it was a budget review, kind of a pre-agenda budget review. So, and we are meeting this week, I think, on, on the solid waste budget. Senior Center Board meeting, I attended that on the 23rd, and of course, the ethics training that we did. So, very good. Well, it's been a long evening. Anything else to come before us?
Mayor, if I can just, yeah-
Oh, thank you.
Just real quick, next week on the budget workshop-
Yes.
You know, that to get everybody's hopes up on bringing a, a budget, balanced budget to everybody. Staff is working very diligently in, in putting together numbers and taking a look at where we're at for this next year. We've got a lot, a lot of accomplishments this last year, and a lot of projects ahead of us this next year. So again, in, in the fashion of a workshop, it's going to be, you know, policy, big picture, trying to, you know, inform the council on where we're at, and then get some, you know, direction to bring back to, you know, the council a balanced budget in June before July 1st.
Okay.
And that workshop will be next Monday at the wastewater treatment plant, and we set the time at 5:00 p.m., unless the council would like to, you know, change that time.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to everyone? All right. Five, five to 5:15, did you say?
5:00 p.m.
Five, 5:30? No.
I was thinking a 15-minute budget meeting.
Oh, five to 5:15? Yes. I, I will strive to not make it as lengthy as last year.
All right.
Are you bringing snacks?
What would you like?
No.
Yes.
I have some stuff leftovers. Okay. Thank you all for being here, and we'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.